Hello, how are you?
Very good. I'll be calling you tomorrow, sir.
So let's do the roll. You ready?
Rick Dorn? Did you say President?
Yes, President.
Okay, Dom Matice?
Present.
Jim King?
Yeah.
Yep.
Aaron Chase?
Present.
Greg Stewart?
Here, present.
Debbie Harrisauer?
Present.
Jamie Wolf and DePete, she's unable to come.
Amber DePete?
Present.
Okay, next I have the review of and acceptance of the minutes from February 4th, April 10th, April 17th, April 24th. Anybody heard me off the mic?
Is it on?
It's on. Do we have the minutes? Let's take February 14th, any errors or omissions? There's none? The motion is checked?
Oh, I'll make a motion to accept the February 14th minutes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, yeah, so all in favor? Okay, the next one is April 10th. Any errors or omissions? Do we obtain a motion?
If motion is accepted.
Second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. April 17th. Any errors or omissions? Do we obtain a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes, aye.
Thank you. April 24th. Errors or omissions? Jim?
Yes, aye.
Indication, do we obtain a motion?
Motion is accepted. Sorry.
All in favor?
Question?
Aye.
That's it, I'm first.
It says draft here, Dom, does that mean draft or?
I will finalize it, now we adopted it, so I will make it a final document and remove that.
Okay, my only, this is the only one that says draft.
Nope.
I was just.
Will we vote it, do we?
Yes.
Do we have some minutes? All right, item four, review of zoning map for Joel. From Kennet Valley Council of Governments. And include discussion of inclusion of the ground water protection overlay district. The process, the process is to finish review of the visual zoning map. As we discussed, 42724. The intent is to prioritize it tonight and post it for two weeks review, and then our next meeting to form an approval, is that correct? All right, so I'll turn it over to Joel.
Okay, yeah, we have the version of the map here, I've got a paper on here too, in case anyone was saying, that we have a, oh, we have, we have three versions, we have an online version, which is here, which is, I think I said everyone the link at some point, but it's basically, you can navigate through and zoom in, and eventually, I mean, what I'm hoping to do is, you can click on any parcel map, a lot of the assessing information on there as well, so if you have to do the, you know, we work with the assessing team, they sent us their data for parcel, anyway, that's, I think that's incidental.
We just work on the file.
Yeah. But this is, work with Mick and Dom, and we went through in fairly excruciating detail, trying, especially being a good digital representation of the, the paper maps here that were, you know, being updated diligently throughout the years with Mark and other people, so this should, that would be now hopefully be the best, that was digital representation of that, give you sort of various, legend on that, you can see the key.
I've already reviewed, but what Dom and Joel did, we looked at every map.
Yep.
And put it on the digital print, make sure that it matches.
So this is, you know, this will correspond obviously to all the zones that are related in the actual land use zones, so. This is why we ask, as of now, I don't, I mean, I mean, I don't know how, how much you might want to talk about, like, we're talking about some of the boundaries, a lot of them are restricted for sensible reasons to parcel lines, some of them won't be, if they run out of lots of parcels, which have different changes in.
Can you go back down for a second, Joel?
Is that?
Yeah, right there, what is that circle? I know that's a little pond, but why doesn't it have a green projection?
Yeah.
Yep. Is that, that's a little pond, isn't that a little pond?
We're, we're. Great. Pleasure, yes.
There's a little pond there, there's no green projections there around it. That just not existed on that?
I don't think so, otherwise we probably wouldn't have picked it up, I mean, I don't know if it's, if you want, I mean, yeah, that would be, yeah, it's 3761.
My mind went out and tripped over somebody.
So someone living in a residential without any kind of research, that's kind of what's going through it all there.
It must not be protection, they probably don't suggest it.
Well, you have to, so, it could be possible.
Okay, I mean, the only section, zone and zone that it's considered, what they consider a weight bond, which is a pond, that was a.
Right, but even the stream, what, 375?
Okay, so 375.
And that's where the green is, that's where the green is everywhere.
Yeah, I got you.
That's why I was looking at the green zone, I wasn't expecting it necessarily to be, it doesn't necessarily have to be a pond, it doesn't have to be the, whatever, the yellow and the blues, yeah, it's there.
Farm pond.
Farm pond, farm pond, there is a yellow pond, that's where you're at. Like, that's the difference.
That's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to.
But I mean, that's, that's.
It looks like on the ad, so we can't, we can, we can say that needs a correction, but that's, that's not what we're here to do, so that, oh, I see, actually, no, yeah, so, we can't, you're making this as digital, this is an error in the original, so. But I suppose, I mean, yeah, I mean, I suppose we're going for a fully active, active representation of that, that's one thing.
Anything that's a one look source, unless it's a, unless it's a farm pond, utility pond, so it's going to be classified as an 75 foot, that forest, just such things, because assuming it's got some kind of a inflow, I don't detect it, and so it's got some kind of a.
Or, I'm sorry, don't move it, let's make a note, John.
Pond at the end of Nickerbocker.
That 37, 61.
Yeah, the green would have to.
Yeah, that's just, yeah.
It looks weird, because there's nothing around.
Here, just kind of jump down. It's obviously being mapped out, even on the parcel. What do you prefer?
I know I scanned around on it online, but I didn't actually see that online.
Really?
Well, I, I was, you know, I saw it when he had it up, I was like, well, that's weird.
Yeah.
I, I, the north end of Brannick Oak was strange, where the little green section is, but I think that's the causeway to the island, and that's why it's green, it just, it just looks weird, but I'm sure that probably will happen sometimes, so. Right up there, yeah, the little green zone that connects to the island, I said, that's kind of weird.
And again, this is, I mean.
Some of this, this connection I thought was a weird zone layout.
Yeah, I think this is, this, yeah, it's a delineated white line there, that's.
Yes. This was strange, I thought the yellow would have covered it, not the other way around.
Well, it's all, it's all showland zone, within showland zone, there is resource protection areas, it's like limited, doesn't that for showland zone as well, so.
Yeah.
That would be still perfect.
The letters were, that, those are like excluded, what, do you know what map that is?
4753. That's, that's the.
That should be out. So what's south of that? Just south of the. Like, what about the?
Yeah, that's 856.
146.
Yeah, sure.
Are you? 46.
No, Matt, 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 eight, so I think there's a little intersection there. Yeah. 156.
This is kind of like a.
Yeah, it's like a weird, yeah, it's like a weird yellow, it's not, it's, well, that's why I said, this is, this should be the, the,
that's limited residential, but this is kind of like a weird yellow.
There's almost a line now, which is how we.
Right, but what is that line? So you guys remember seeing this, you see how these are outlined with like a, like almost like a sharpie, or I mean, like a highlighter, they're not, they don't look the same as this.
Yeah, that's when it's residential, it's the, and stuff, and then, there is, we consider that to be, I guess, a boundary, which is why it's, that's a weird little gap in the middle. Because we thought these were boundaries. For some reason, I mean.
That's kind of Maple Ridge.
Because all's worth basically asking everybody is saying not, not, I'm not adding that significance. Not changing it yet, just the single groundwater protection area that exists in our existing ordinance. Take that from paper. Make sure that's digital, make sure it matches the paper. And we can say now we're updating the zoning and the groundwater protection area. As is, and all we're doing is a paper to digital conversion. And that way we can put that to the board and the public and say that's all we're doing, we're not changing anything yet. So if we wanted to change something, to me that's separate.
Uh huh, it is, it's two steps.
Yeah, I, I feel like that's a different discussion. If we want to change or update it.
So when you say overlay and visualize a, a map?
There is a map, yeah, there is a map in our ordinance, in the paper, it's hand drawn. Yeah, and digitize it, add it in.
Would that be a separate map from this?
It would, yeah, you want to establish you, uh, this digital, I think, like, thinking about this, the idea is to establish that this digital version is, um. Accurate with, um. With what everyone understands to be the same. It was very interesting, that was, that was the act of us, and that we've got maps, but.
So we'll leave this the way it is, for review, and then we'll create a second overlay map.
Yeah, sure, things of interest.
Yeah, we all agree?
Yep.
There's no action tonight, the action's gonna be in the next meeting. To accept it.
Right, but we're gonna make an action to post it publicly. Yeah.
Someone make a motion to do that?
Things were good. Make a motion that we, I'll make a motion that, uh. I don't, we didn't have this a case number, I think, um, I'll make a motion that we accept the digital products for draft release to the public.
Second?
For a second, all in favor?
I, I do have a question though.
Go ahead.
Ultimately. I, I believe on the table is eliminating the groundwater ordinance. That's a standalone document and then creating this, and putting this into the zoning map, uh, into the zoning ordinance itself. And just creating a separate zone, so, okay. So yes.
Second, to, to post it.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Jim. And then, um, second exercise is creating the, the map.
For the groundwater protection?
Correct.
Yes, I'm fairly close, um.
Do you have what you have, you need?
Oh, oh, absolutely, yeah, I'm just trying, working out, uh, yeah, it's, it's all about. And I won't want to, but, uh, like I said, we have, we have the link, um, so literally, uh, posting the public thing. Feel free to post the link, because this is, you know, people can tell you, they just can't change anything. I also, I can also send a PDF, and I also have paper versions, so.
A PDF would be great, and as far as the online one, I sent the board members that link, because I use it.
Yeah.
But they couldn't open it, could anyone open it, or I'm just stating was no one could access it, so I don't know if the link you sent me has special permissions, or.
It shouldn't.
So you two can work that out?
Yeah.
Yeah, I will, but you said, you have, you.
I used the other one, the first one you said.
Okay.
I had the link still, I didn't try the new one.
I'll double check the link.
So let's.
Okay. Alright, well, I'll make sure we get that.
Can we shoot to have that done this week?
Oh, I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll do it tomorrow night.
And then, um, the clock starts ticking, and, uh, next meeting in two weeks, we file my approval. Are we okay with it?
Well, I mean, assuming we're gonna review any comments that come in.
Correct. That'd be the exercise of the meeting.
Right. And do we think that's a reasonable timeframe? Allow two weeks for comments?
The only, if we have a meeting in two weeks, we have to get it up online, and I can't speak for who's gonna amend the website, so. Yeah, I think that would be.
Just to make sure if you have any problems getting it up this week.
We were on it for weeks. Bring it back to you, John.
Well, hopefully you can send out any comments the Friday before. And include that in the packet so that we know what we're dealing with.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's not that people can't comment at the meeting, it's just. If there are comments we need to address ahead of time, it'd be good to know if we're walking into.
Okay, let's move on to. Page number twenty-four zero zero nine.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks so much, and, and Mick and Don, I thank, thank you very much for, you know, we, we put some hours in.
Are we ready for Bill?
Oh.
Bill, you want to update us?
Yeah, please, uh, I got you guys in report, you want to.
We have the document Bill was talking about.
I just wanna know, I updated a memo that, from the last meeting, it's a proposed findings, and I just updated the status in regards to. It deemed to completed the last meeting to public input, um. That the elevation certificate was submitted, and I actually had information incorrect on here regarding the height of the building, so I had put the height of the existing building is twenty-nine feet, and it's actually. Twenty-eight, and then the proposed building is actually twenty-seven. So I'm gonna correct that. And if you got, just as findings, that correct information.
Um, just one question, you know, this is the elevation certificate, uh, aligned with the existing building. So that's the elevation of the slab. Okay, so you don't need to do anything, I just, I wanted to make sure you didn't redesign anything.
No.
To get to this elevation, this is the actual elevation.
Yeah.
Which is what we're going for, so great. Yep, I just wanted that now, you know, we know for sure that building's out of the floodplain, so.
Thank you, Joel.
Yeah, that was my only question.
Okay, and I may be asking same question. If I look at the document, and I see two seventeen-two, two seventeen, two fifty, that's where it is currently.
Currently, yep, and I think the floodplain, I think we're actually two feet above.
Correct.
Yes, what is?
Floodplain is two.
Two fourteen, twelve.
It's two fourteen point seven.
Your current slab is at that elevation.
Yep.
And that's what you asked.
Right, and state ordinance says you have to build one foot above that, which they are, so, and lowest adjacent grade is what they call the lag, is. Just the lowest dirt around, and I'm assuming you're on the backside or the front side, but that doesn't matter, it's, it's really just the height of the slab.
Yep.
That's all that matters on a slab, so it's the two seventeen, he's got the one foot free board. As far as the flood shirts program, it is perfectly valid. He can rebuild.
Good. Okay. Dawn?
Nope. I have no questions, sir.
Okay, oh, the public cap. Joe, any questions on this application? Yeah?
Uh, no.
Thank you. We're having no questions, um, appropriate to move on to approving the application? Or what the board desires?
Yeah, yeah, we did that last year, and the only question was the elevation certificate.
Was I dreaming, or did you give us a? Sure, three or?
So on the second page of the one that was printed this evening, I highlighted in yellow.
Fortune here.
Should be so inclined.
I was looking for the case, certificate something.
There we go, I should. And no public input we had. Left.
You know who that was?
So, uh, they'll be online.
There's someone, capital K A T, who is here quite frequently, I'm not sure who that is, they're at a lot of meetings, I don't know who it is, but they're not raising their hand.
Okay, so they're all shut.
Yeah, I just had one additional comment. If that's okay. Um, just the small piece of driveway that's remediated.
Yeah.
So if we can extend the silt fence to cover that drainage swale, because you're not doing any other earth moving. So, just making sure that that covers the path to the water based on the contours. That you showed on the map, it's probably gonna go in that kind of direction, so you really probably just need to extend it kind of a little bit more towards the building, toward the main house. And then you're fine.
We're gonna use the silt sock anyway, so that's the best.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it was incorporating that while that earth is disturbed.
Yeah.
And while it's rebedge, regrowing.
Yeah, and I'm on third by inspector day, so I'll make sure that stuff's all taken.
So I'll, I think it's appropriate at this point to entertain a motion to. Who, I'm hearing? Greg, you wanna do that?
I can't, I gotta find the case, okay, um, are we still? No.
Come here, hold there. Okay, I would like to make the motion that case number twenty-four dash zero zero nine, two oh six Memorial Drive, conditional use permit request to remove and replace. The garage including thirty percent expansion of a non-conforming structure in the Shoreland District, Steven Stacey Schuman, map forty-two, lot zero zero three, be approved.
For a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? All opposed?
I, I, Jim, Mr. Jim, I'm in favor.
Jim, you're in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. There you go.
I'll send you a notice of decision.
Yeah, and I'll talk a lot tomorrow, open some stuff all.
Yep.
Alright, thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Guys, enjoy.
Thank you, John.
Moving on to six other business.
I just wanna start off by saying that has been clarified, there was this question around it, I didn't know if it was a scrubber's error, if I had made an error. Um, and it actually, after I did a bunch of research, it was in the minutes, and so I did add in what the board wanted to be in there, so. It's lack and wide, it's in the minutes, and we accept it, so we don't need to have that discussion.
Okay.
I have another question.
Move those paper pieces aside.
You're all shut with that one?
So, they're gonna go on with the second reading, is that what you said?
Correct.
Okay.
However, they did ask, I put a memo in there, um, that would, went to the council when I asked that they extend the timeframe out. So there were two changes in there, one was just clarifying that the CEO, in terms of enforcement and inspections, would designate, uh, qualified, yeah, and then the other one was.
So it moved the blasting one?
That was the one that wasn't clear, and that turned out it was clear.
Oh.
I apologize, because we're not sharing.
Distance location for measuring the blast ring. I know.
Thank you, okay, so this is clarified. Uh, the other was to. Because, um, someone had at the council meeting asked that the groundwater protection be considered again, and so. What I did was just add language in under, um. Lookability, I believe, that. It's not permitted in the groundwater protection overlay district, and it already is not, so that's actually no change, so that, if you look at that separate ordinance, does not allow mineral extraction. So it's not in conflict with anything.
So we have no action tonight?
No action.
So it's going back, as Dawn said, to the second reading, and. So it's in there.
The twenty, and hopefully they'll take action on that.
This is crank, crank case oil and all that stuff, was that added or?
That, that is not in the final copy, because I was actually just working on some potential amendments on the groundwater ordinance, so that. That's not going to the council, but it may come back. In within the zone.
So we have no action on that? Correct. So let's move on to amending the zoning ordinance to incorporate groundwater protection ordinance elements.
I can give you an overview of what it is that I'm suggesting we'd like. So, we have the groundwater protection ordinance, and. We just talked about mapping the existing area that's identified, and then there's a second stage. Increasing that area by amending the map. That we just referenced with Joel, so what I'd like to do is take the language from the groundwater ordinance that exists and incorporate into the zoning, so it would be the same protections. Um, it would just be in the zoning ordinance, and then once that's accomplished, you know, we would do it at the same time, so you would repeal the groundwater ordinance, and it would be just the zoning ordinance, and then the map would be on the official zoning map. So it's a merge, really, and then an expansion.
Would you, would you use the same language?
I did, I did, I believe I sent out some draft.
Yeah.
Yeah, amendments to the zoning ordinance, and then I will take this further, I don't wanna go rogue on you guys, because I'm, you know, starting all these different things, I wanted to make sure this is what you wanted to do. So I did start to make some amendments, incorporate the language, and it would be pretty much the same language unless you decide to change it. I just updated the definitions and took the actual text and put it in what I believe is the appropriate placement in the zone ordinance. But you can, you could change it, that would be an amendment, which would be a public hearing process.
But we don't change it, we can incorporate it, and that we actually moved it through.
Well, it still actually is, um, changing the zoning ordinance, it would still require a public hearing, so actually, if you decided you wanted to make changes. The process, it, it could go hand in hand, it wouldn't extend the process.
Okay, so this is one step, one piece of those changes.
So if you, if you want to go in this direction, what I'll do is I'll go ahead and finish incorporating that, and then you can look at the actual language and see if it's correct. So in concept, if you, if you would like to move forward with this, then I will give you the, the correct information.
So there's no action tonight, it's just giving you direction to go follow it.
Correct.
Well, I mean, a lot of this is just restating in a little bit more detail with a specific zone. That's already covered in our zoning ordinance, and that's where, um. It's, it's still struggling.
I don't believe it is, though.
Well, it is, on page twenty-six, A, it's covered in water quality protection, specifically identified, um, water quality protection, and they identify groundwater. So, it's already covered, it just doesn't specify the zone, this just has a lot more detail, right, about what specific. Limitations there are and requirements, and it's specifically around this one zone. But I mean, we really have groundwater protection throughout all of Windruth. Can be a factor, and I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm just saying, this feels a little extra to me. Is the only question, and I'm sure for some reason we created it to protect this area, um. But it's just. I don't know, uh, it, to me, it's almost a little bit redundant. And it's very, very, very small subset area, and I'm perfectly fine incorporating it, I'm just trying to look for simplification, that's.
Yeah.
My only thought process here, if everybody feels like they wanna put it in, we can put it in, I'm just thinking, it's four less pages we have in our core ordinance. But I feel like we're already covered, and in conditional use permit, groundwater protection is, is explicitly laid out as a, as a topic. So we have it, you know, I feel like we're covered when people are coming to us, and. We have something to go back onto the ordinance, and just because it doesn't have as much detail of this, groundwater protection is groundwater protection is groundwater protection. You know, I can show you hundred-page manuals, thousand-page manuals on groundwater protection, this is just, uh, again, just more, a little bit more detail. So it, it really, it's already, to me, it feels like we're already covered here, and in our, on page fifty-three, what is it, number seven? Um, groundwater protection, in our condition, in our, uh, conditional use permit.
So in your opinion, if we did away with this as a document, we'd have it covered.
Well, I, I felt like we're covered, but this, the only thing I wanna be sure about, this specifically identified an area that they wanted protected. I don't know why. Because there's no significant granite, uh, sand and gravel deposits, there are no aquifers in Maine by comparisons, and significant sand and gravel are just. Unsaturated areas most of the time that drain really well, and they're almost always around, they're glacial deposits, so. What they're trying to define here, and what they're trying to protect here is unclear to me, and I can't go back to nineteen ninety-one and ask them, what were you thinking? What was it, why did you do this, did somebody live there, and they just said, I don't want people doing X here? And it, it's, it's unclear what this is for and what this is protecting, to me. And it just, again, we can include it. But, we're already covered, if it's just protecting groundwater in the town of Windruth, we're already covered. So why does this area get special treatment over the rest of the town? Uh, so I, that, that's, so I'm not trying to be controversial, I'm just trying to say it's weird, and I don't understand the ninety-one ordinance. That's really, I guess, my biggest question. And I wasn't around, and I don't have any information other than what's here.
The only information I have was that Ed mentioned at the meeting that it was a brownfield site, or there was something to do. With that, there was a history to that land area.
The super fun site, right, but the super fun site is now classified as remediated, which means that. Basically, it acts like, when, when it's remediated, it acts like normal ground, it's no longer classified as a super fun classification. So they may not wanna build there, and there's other possible restrictions, but that's the same as like if you had it done for something else. Um, so, I, again, I understand probably why this exists, is probably directly related to that super fun, but the sites were mediated. It doesn't really make sense necessarily that that needs to be in place. Because again, if it's remediated, it's now down to everywhere else, we're protecting groundwater everywhere else by that one statement, and by our conditional use permit. Um, so we're kinda covered, but again, if anybody feels like they wanna leave it in, we can leave it in.
Did you look through the changes that Dawn suggested in the actual zoning ordinance?
I don't have the newest bird, well, I didn't look that close.
And they're, they're relatively minor, it's a few definitions and a few clarifications, so I think, I think the concept to eliminate the groundwater. Ordinance incorporated into the regular zoning ordinance, I think that makes perfect sense, and again, I think the, the changes so far that I saw were relatively minor, I mean, there's, there's a sentence added here or two in the bullet one or two, so.
So, again, I'm not opposed to including it, I'm just trying to think about our ordinance as a whole, and the longer it is, the longer it is, and the more we have to incorporate. And I just felt like we're already kinda covered, but. Um, if the super fun site was still active, I might have a different concern, but my understanding is the site's been remediated, that's what it is on EPA's website, anyways.
So you're suggesting eliminate all references to a groundwater protection zone?
Yeah, and, and because again, I think it was specifically around that super fun site, which is now on EPA site anyways, it says remediated.
Okay.
And by their definition, that means it no longer has contamination, it's, it's, it's regular soil now, it's regular whatever.
And the buildings and the process and the equipment, all has been turned over to the town.
Right, there is no, there is no, it doesn't exist, it doesn't exist, so they've remediated the problem, so to EPA, it's, doesn't exist anymore. Well, yeah.
So Dawn, from a process standpoint, if, if we vote, we would vote to eliminate this, that would have to go to the council for elimination, right?
Yep, you'd have a public hearing, like you're making a zoning, meant to land use ordinance, so.
And that would flush out. Um, copper sheet watershed officials.
Say that again, sorry?
Bill, Bill and Wendy would be involved in that.
Certainly.
They'd be made aware, and if there was, they had an answer to what Greg's asking. They would be the ones flushing out, another one would be, um, Ed would be another one, he lives right next door, right?
Yeah, he lives there, pretty close, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, and he was. Uh, yeah, I'm guessing he was on the board at that point.
Well, it would have been nineteen years, so he wasn't on in ninety-one.
He wasn't. I'm sure aware of what was going on.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not far from where he lives.
So there's plenty of ex, experts in our own world, but there's plenty of folks that would be aware of what we were, what we were doing, and would have, if they had an issue, go ahead.
I just wanna be clear on what we're talking about, it sounds like everyone's like, yeah, let's get rid of the ordinance, and the question is, do we add things to the zoning ordinance, or is it? Unnecessary, that's, I just wanna make sure, that's what I'm hearing.
That's what Greg said.
Right, and I'm saying, you know, based on, based on the section K, we don't need to add anything. Because I could interpret that as that everything in here is covered here. That the, there's no added protection by having this groundwater ordinance, to me.
So the two choices we have is incorporating. And the other one is elimination, because it's not necessary.
There's no added protection, but there is added clarification.
Correct.
So I don't wanna, I don't wanna take that piece of it away, because if, if somebody really wanted the clarification, that's what this document would help provide.
And for future meeting, I could outline, I could outline that in more depth, with, you know, with the notification processes, the timeframe, and, you know. Look at the amendments that have been proposed and tighten that up, and then you have all the facts to make a decision. Because right now, like I said, this is, these weren't final documents.
So we're not taking an action, we're, we're giving you direction.
Correct.
Further.
Well, and, and ask the question is to say, you know, is this document needed anymore? That's a, to me, it's, it's, you know, we should be asking that probably of all our ordinances, I don't know, semi-regular basis, because we're good at adding them, we're not good at removing them.
And I would recommend running it by Bill and, and Ed, and.
Yeah.
She'd say.
Right.
She would say that.
Right.
If you don't realize, react, or say.
But you could also ask Mark and say, has he even ever used or opened this ordinance for any reason? Has there ever been, uh, does he have to open this if somebody builds or does something in this area?
We didn't know that it did.
I'm just gonna say, that would be my guess, I'm just, I'm just saying, if it's never been used, maybe it's okay if it goes away, so that's.
And maybe somebody assumed, maybe they assumed it went away when they worked on the entire zoning ordinance, is incorporated all the groundwater.
It could have been, it could have been, well, and again, but, you know, back when this was created, I don't know the status of that super fun site, it might have existed and been active.
This was, it started in eighty-five, it's amended in ninety-one.
Right, but I know, no, I'm saying, all I know is I went to EPA site, and it says remediated, I, it doesn't have a date.
Gotcha.
I couldn't find a date that it was remediated, so it just says, it's remediated, so I'm like, that doesn't help me.
That was turned over, remember when we talked about, um, police, fire, and ambulance being separated? This is going back probably ten years, and then, and as a result. Fire station stayed where it was, police got renovated, and the ambulance service was moved over. Over where it is now, and since the fire station was built, up on the hill, that same era. The committee that was working on that, which I remember of. Went down to that site. And had been turned over to the town.
Right.
So to Greg's point. They had done the water remediation first, and then they, they were doing the air remediation after that. And then, that was all done, and that was a proposed site for one of those uses. Fire station didn't make sense, police didn't sense. Uh, town garage didn't make sense. And that was in that same era, so I'm gonna say within the last ten years, that was turned over to the town, that's a right term, right?
Right, and probably when they turned it over, that was pretty close to when they remediated it.
It was done.
Right, remediated is just, they finished it, EPA's like, it is now regular everything. And they probably, because of the owner, and usually when there is super fun site, the owner doesn't do a good job of paying, they probably went to front and. So it's quite possible that that's why they turned it over to the town, because the people that.
Probably two thousand eight.
Two thousand eight?
Yeah, so I started working for one of the bandrooms in two thousand nine, and they've been there for just a year. Yeah, so I think they moved in the new base in two thousand eight.
Yep. Yep. It's been a while. So you've got enough direction?
I feel that I do. We're not gonna, I'm not gonna post any public hearing, I'm not, I'm just gonna clarify the facts more and get in, get input from some of the people that you've identified and come back with that information.
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be on the agenda. Okay. Move along. Jim, you understood that?
I guess, I guess it's Bill Monagle had some objection to removing this, maybe it would be good that Ed would come and let us hear.
Like to hear what it is.
Yeah.
I actually am meeting with him tomorrow at noon, so I'll bring this up.
Great idea. All right, we're moving down to bylaws. Jim, you still with us?
Yep.
We're moving down to bylaws.
Takes time to
Go out with your desire here.
Is this just the revisions to the version we had?
Correct.
Okay.
So at the last meeting, you talked about this, um there was a couple of revisions that you requested and then I was looking for my copy, because there was a couple of clarifications I made as well, but anything that's changed is is the um the red line. So.
So on the first pages, fourth and second and fourth.
Yeah, if you, if you could just go through those, because there's not very many.
I'm on the first page, I'm seeing halfway down.
Yep, just changing it to the second and fourth, which is when we meet, so.
That's all on that page. Next page. Down on the B workshop. Limiting Zodiac subdivision regulations. And I'm sure.
Because land use ordinance covers both. Is why I'm suggesting.
So we're just using a bunch of words to say the same thing.
Exactly, okay.
Anybody have a problem with that? Then I see commission is only permitted
Yeah, that would be correct.
Special meeting by email and phone call, I'm sorry, I skipped. In person to the residents of two. We've crossed out a bunch of those words and added two. Board members by email and phone. Sit on that page. Next page, I see nothing. Move on page four. Order, I'm down on uh two A. Members of public are invited to speak, depending on the agenda, speakers may have up to five minutes. To present comments, questions to board, speakers' comments and questions will be addressed at the planning board's discretion after everyone who intended to speak is heard. Crossing out the order proceeding, time limits for the presentation comments shall be as presented in table one. Anybody have an issue with that? Next change. On page six, top B, little B. Crossing out the chairperson's assignment, all approved minutes and findings and fact, in the event that the chairperson absent the way, and the sign approved minutes and findings back, that all I'm okay with that.
It's all out, yes.
Yep.
I'm on seven, I see nothing. Greg's telling me there's nothing left. That's it, right? Do I have an issue with that? I'll entertain a motion. Jim, you have any question about that?
No, no, I don't have any questions at this point.
I'll entertain a motion, accept the changes.
I'll make a motion that we accept the changes as proposed to the
For a second?
Second.
Second, ready? Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
These were the original, we were going to rescind the existing.
We have to repeal them at the same time, thank you very much, Aaron, we should include in the motion to repeal the current ones.
Do that first then.
Right, that's
Do the, make that motion.
I make a motion that we appeal or rescind the existing bylaws and to accept to adopt the bylaws as presented, adopted by the with the changes as noted in this.
It is made. Next, second, questions? Jim, any questions?
No.
Hall of favor?
Hi.
Okay, Don, you have an update on zoning ordinance reorganization status?
Um Ed and I communicated today, I've got his or your changes and he had reported them to the ordinance, so he said he has time next week, he was just yelling at me earlier tonight, so I intend to meet with him next week. And so at the next meeting, I may have
In two weeks, we may have it on agenda to review and approve.
Yeah.
This is a revising the ordinance based on setbacks and no other verdicts in there.
Things that we discussed many months ago.
Many months ago.
Many months ago before mineral ordinance came up.
That goes way back to David.
Yeah, it does.
And if I'm wrong, but this, we were talking about, that's where we went up the That was in the same ordinance?
No, so the reorganization is before I came on board.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that does not include that piece, but all these pieces I can move towards. Is that what you're saying? Because we've talked about any little cleanup, any other amendments we can afford concurrently.
I guess what I was trying to say is, we've, we've spent time talking about eliminating that or incorporating it. Does that pile that process as well?
If you incorporate pieces into it, then it would be part of it.
And if it's not necessary, we eliminate it, it won't, okay.
Correct.
I guess my point is, we take that up for the next meeting.
Yes.
As well, yes.
We'll cover all that.
I had it straight once.
Sorry, I wasn't clear. And no action necessary, right?
No action.
You're advising us. Definitions, uh tables are used.
I'd like to review the table of uses. One of the um things that I feel needs to be addressed and our attorney had some concerns about it is, and you've used it historically, it hasn't appeared to be a problem, but this is you know, look, looking ahead is that you have commercial uses, low, medium and high intensity. And you really want to have specific uses identified. It's a permissible ordinance, so if you don't identify it, you can't use it. So if you, if you classify everything under one of those categories, technically you may have to allow everything. Because it's not, because it doesn't restrict it to defined use. So my, my um suggestion would be that we look at the use table and we add uses as appropriate and and make sure that they're defined as well.
You have any input? Questions?
Do we wanna, are we doing that now?
No.
Oh.
No, I just want to do all the footwork and have you say no.
I think it's an excellent idea.
No, I think you have to include uses. Um I get exactly why.
Yeah.
And, yeah. Now, how do we get the complete list? Do we take like all the applications over the last ten years and do we have categories on our applications of what their use is?
I would look at what uses you want. You don't have to look historically.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm saying, but if we're going to categorize them, we want to make sure we know what they are. So in other words, you know, retail, is there retail, is there um, are there different categories for retail? Is there retail selling goods, retail selling services, are there retail services like doing haircuts, things like that? Are there, you know, what, so what about selling insurance, you know? If we're, if we're going to try to figure out what uses what, it'd be nice to know what uses we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Because I could think of like an infinite number, well, somebody that says, oh, I'm going to put a drywall business up. What does that mean? Do they drywall right there? Do they come in and you drywall their car or, you know, what is that? So just, and and that's where I said, maybe what we've had for uses come forward, we could use that to maybe help define that. Or maybe the state has a, a definition table.
Yeah, yeah, I have those definitions of all the categories.
Yeah.
Of these.
To know, yeah, so to know where they fit, it would be nice to have a table of, kind of like what's in the table.
What's considered general cultural, right?
Right, yeah, somebody decides their, you know, somebody decides they're selling plants and it's a
That's Joel, Kevin.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'm guessing, I'm guessing that exists somewhere.
Yeah.
I would think.
Yeah, I've got, I've got some information that I could use for that. Um and then also I started to look at areas like that have villages, which seem to be in accordance with what the comprehensive plan and your downtown revitalization plan and just that I've heard seems to be in keeping with what has stated to be the desire. So I think we look historical uses and then if, look at communities that you like. And what are they allowing or, you know, restrictions do they have?
Right, I'm, I'm perfectly fine copying somebody else's or a table, I, I just, it'd be nice to have something to start from when we're taking a look at this, just because it's, what do we need to define?
I will provide that for you.
You know, somebody starts selling, you know, somebody starts selling, you know, bait fish downtown, is that permissible? I don't know.
Yeah, you're right.
You know, wild fish and they sell them, I don't know.
On the streets.
I mean, they go in the cart like hot dogs, you know, I don't know. So we want to have categories that we can kind of finch things into, so we know. I mean, I don't want to be ridiculous, but I'm just saying, you know what I'm saying, we just want to have some categories so that we're not
We know your next draw.
I know, I know, you're watching me, you'll see.
Do you have enough work direction now, Don?
I do, and I, I flipping, flipping, I hate this feeling, I um, I pulled, I printed um not Hallowell, Gardner. I looked at Gardner's ordinance and they have all their land use ordinances together. Um so we're talking, looking at the groundwater ordinance, what I've done is I pull definitions from all the ordinances that are land use related and I've incorporated them into this one document that we've been working on, make sure there's an redundancy or conflict. Um and they have, in their zoning, they have their solar ordinance and they have their wind ordinance and anything land use. And I, I really like the format and they're, they have a thousand districts. So their table of uses, in my opinion, is very difficult to use because it's long. There's a lot of uses and a lot of districts, so yours would be much more simple. But um I feel like that's a, that's a good jumping off point, looking, looking at that and potentially incorporating all of the land use ordinances into one. And you have one index, because we don't have everything codified online. The council may be looking that in the budget this year, but regardless, it's good to have them in one place, in my opinion.
Any other discussion on that? So you have your work.
But I still am going to look for a little more input before you're done.
Okay.
Okay. So we don't have site plan regulations. And I have a six thousand square foot building being proposed in the village. And we don't have anything that speaks to the architecture, you know, um lighting, landscaping, we have, we have some uh performance standards around drainage and stormwater. But as far as the aesthetic, there's very little. Once a property gets developed, it could be redeveloped at some point, but it's probably going to be a long time, so those are missed opportunities. Really, I would really like to see set plan regulations get put into place. And I think Anthony's concerned that I'm going to wear out volunteers. Um I'd really like to prioritize this and have like, you know, we can have a separate special meeting or two for site plan regulations. I just feel like as projects come in, they're missed opportunities if we don't have something in place, because then you're going to be looking at whatever it is you get. You don't have a lot to work with, you have the conditional use criteria. You have to be very careful with that, because if they're too vague, you know, and it's contested, it may not hold up important. And you don't want to put someone over a barrel, it's a very, it's going to be a very uncomfortable process, in my opinion.
But but if we're, but we're only going to see the ones that need a conditional use.
Mm-hmm.
So if they're downtown in the village and they decide to make something look like a, you know, big station, we can't say anything about that.
When, because it's not a conditional use permit. Why can't we expand or broaden the authority of the board, the purview of the board?
Well, I don't think we'd want to add and say all projects have to come aboard.
I'm not saying that, but maybe there's a threshold where you say, you know, like and I, I, I seem to say, and I've got nothing against Dunkin' Donuts, but I seem to recall either Ed or somebody when I first came on the planning board saying that they didn't, never even reviewed Dunkin' Donuts.
Right, they had no
Yeah, they wouldn't have any authority.
Okay.
Yeah, and the only thing that's probably going to tie up, I know what you're saying, Don, I mean, we do have a sign ordinance.
Yeah.
So they are limited on their signs. But there's not much else, you know, they can make it whatever color they want, whatever shape they want, whatever, whatever they want.
Yeah.
And, you know, I mean, you could get into, I, I really want to be careful, like us to get into the historical district and it gets dangerous really quick.
Oh, those two.
Yeah, they're very challenging at times.
Yeah.
And that can really drive away development, you know, where
But what you drive away, is that what you want?
Well, again, it's, it, it drive away just because of the extra permits and the extra requirements. Not necessarily driving away, it's just, people are going to look at that that are looking to develop. You know, we have a giant mill down street downtown and they're like, I don't want to develop that because I have to follow this historical ordinance. And this is a lot of extra hoops to jump through in a historical district. And it's very confusing because historical districts get very complicated quickly. Well, the windows, can they look historic or do they have to be historic? There's very difference between a window that looks a hundred years old and is a hundred years old. There's very big difference between the operation, the function and how you maintain them and all of that.
Specify that.
You can, I'm just saying that, that has another added develop, I guess my question would be, you know, we didn't see Dunkin' Donuts. How do we put a trigger in there that, okay, that that's going to be some kind of a site permit and then it has to come here?
I think it would
How do you trigger that?
I'm going to propose an ordinance for you to
Okay.
That's what I'd like to do.
Is this for all areas or?
So it would be, everywhere in town, a site plan generally applied to commercial uses. However, multifamily, which now falls under subdivision, if you have adequate provisions in place, you could designate multifamily to be site plan and not subdivision, because it's there's more of a process, you have to have at least two meetings and some other things. But so in site plan regulations, you could say, okay, all commercial development requires a site plan review. And these types of things, we're going to have Mark review and these types of things, um you know, Don can review. And the rest goes to the planning board or it all goes to planning board or whatever you want. So, but it's commercial uses and I would recommend multifamily was what would come under site plan. So right now, those types of uses require a conditional use permit. But the, the parameters that you're looking at are very vague.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, somebody could build right now, what you're saying is they could go build an apartment complex out of shipping containers. Because those are structurally sound, that they meet all of the requirements. Well, I mean, there, there's, you're not, there is no limit on that.
Yeah.
And they could do it right on Main Street, they could do it where it was visible. And I, that's, I, I get what Don's saying and I'm just, I also don't want to have, you know, if every permit has to come in. You know, and that's so, trying to find that line between the two would be, would be nice. Yeah. Right, oh, exactly, yeah, exactly.
And as far as being concerned about driving development away or encouraging development, in my experience, developers want to know what are the regulations?
Oh, right, that, that's what I'm saying, that's
Tell me upfront, so I can need it or not.
I was, I was only stating historical districts scare developers away.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Because they are very limiting what they allow and they're basically like, that house has been there for a hundred and fifty years, you can't change it. And they're like, I have to change it to be able to use it for my use. And we're not talking about that, we're saying giving them guidance on what they need to do and to conform to, to make it and use it here. And sometimes that can actually enhance development, because people are like, hey, they care about their town, they really want everything to look similar. And, you know, yeah, like, you know, you go to McDonald's in Freeport.
I was just going to say.
That's what, that's what Aaron said.
And it's like nationwide famous.
It doesn't, it doesn't look like a McDonald's.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, they did a great job to make it a burger.
Yeah, exactly, the drive-through still works the same, but it doesn't look the same. So it's, and given the location and their
Yeah, exactly, the drive-through still works the same, but it doesn't look the same, so it's, and given the location in their downtown, it helps maintain that. Kind of character, so it's like, okay, that that made sense. You know, and and because of all our lakes and everything, we are a little bit of a destination type place, so it's like, yeah, we could. End up with, you know, something that we really didn't wanna see.
Scale of development. And I'm not speaking for against any project that's on the horizon. However, in the village, you may want a certain scale and size buildings. You may have considered a maximum square footage of retail buildings. Footprint or, you know, multi-story. And we don't have that, or you may want a maximum square footage of retail business on Route two oh two. Cause that's gonna decide whether you're gonna have the Super Walmart. Or, you know, building that has, buildings that have franchise architecture. You know, like, once they build a writing, it always looks like a pharmacy, right, no matter what they change it into, so, um. I feel it's fairly urgent, because. The scale of this building. May or may not fit in with what everyone thinks of as a village. And we don't have anything right now to.
Remember when the. The guy coming in is gonna buy Barry's land out there and he's gonna put. Storage units.
Yeah, the high-end storage units.
High end, yeah.
Call and and they were gonna have one with the, like, the glass, like, the indoor. Like humidity controlled and everything.
And he kinda said, oh, we're gonna make it look nice, but.
We didn't have anything to.
We didn't have any pictures or anything.
No, we didn't have anything to, yeah.
Say, no, yeah, trust me, it'll look.
You can't only go this high or.
Right. Cause, you know, the question was, holy cow, that's nice to be, to see as you're coming into this quaint town.
Right, flood was guarding over the now too.
Well, you're right, if you don't do it now.
And they're on three different corners, two different corners.
It's gonna be too late.
Because property, that's redeveloped.
Because there's money to develop. There is money out there. You just have to get it.
So not a matter of if it's gonna change, it's how.
And when.
Exactly, yeah.
So is there.
If you don't change, then you're left behind.
I think, I think Belgrade has similar ordinance to what you're talking about, you know, Freeport does. I'm curious if there's information out there as to. What, whether discouraged or is encouraged development in those areas.
I I can make some inquiry, I don't know.
Now, cause Belgrade was run down terrible, it looked awful twenty-five years ago. To drive down through town, it's, it's very beautiful.
Right, with these stores out there.
Right, yeah. That all happened. In a short, I mean, that all got beautified in a short period of time, and I'm curious if that had anything to do with.
Hmm.
That ordinance or not.
I can, I I can make some inquiries, I know that whether a town is considered um, too, too regulatory or, you know, business unfriendly. A lot of times, times it depends on who you ask too, right, because. Uh, every town I've been in has the worst regulations, the hardest to get permits, and that's what you hear when you first get there, well, that every town isn't the hardest, but that's, you know, people are.
Every town's a hard.
Here when you first get there, so we don't wanna be um, business unfriendly, we want the regulations to be clear, you know, the. Uh, the general policy, we'll interpret them and apply them, so those are goals, but you also have to protect yourself and put. Elements in place, you know, with design and uses and.
Yeah.
So I think it's pretty important.
No, it is, it's a, it's a, it's a very good point, you know, you go downtown and pretty much everybody knows where Parks Performance is. Kinda stands out. And, you know, I think it's really, really well done. But that doesn't mean it has to be really well done. They could use those colors and designs and really have some fun with it, and there's nothing we could say about it, right? So I, I, and and I think you're right, Don, if developers wanna know the rules, they wanna know what the process is if they wanna develop. So, I mean, even when we did the solar ordinance, there are people complaining about it, but a lot of the solar farm developers were like, thank you. Cause now you told us what we'd have to do.
Yeah.
It's not this big question mark when they walk in here.
Yeah.
A question I would have about an ordinance like that as well. How would that apply to?
I have a. This is Jim, I have another um. Thing I'd like to bring up about the downtown area, first of all, I agree that. We should, we, we should have some extended study about this topic, because I think it's a very important topic, went to pass to look forward to what we're gonna do in the future. And I don't think that, um, I think it's a much bigger topic than the planning board itself can really tackle, because it really will involve. I think a lot more public comment. Um, and, and a lot of really careful consideration. But there is another one, another issue that I'd like to address, and that is that. When we rewrote the ordinances several years ago, um. I don't remember what year it was, it was uh, twenty eighteen or something like that. Um. One of the things that we voted on and it never made it into the final document. And uh, is um, the um, setbacks. In the village zone. We voted to have this, a front and sideline setback of, of zero feet. And a, and a backline setback of um, ten feet. And um. That didn't make it into the final document. And the reason for that setback was so that. Um. Businesses and buildings in the downtown. Village zone could have common walls. Just as, you know, all along Main Street from the post office up to the. Old um, Fairpoint Building. And um, yes, I know they're grandfathered in, however. Um, any new construction in the village zone is not um. Grandfathered in. And that was the consensus of the board at that time to have common walls. Um. Option available in the downtown area. In the village zone. And I think we need to um. Get that in there. If you look at the um, table number three, I think it is in the, in the document where. Um, it says that the uh, front setback is zero feet. But the sidelines are ten feet, that means there's twenty feet between buildings. Which is a really inefficient use of. A very uh, valuable land resource in a village. High-density zone. And um. There's. No real justification for that kind of a setback in a high-density zone like that. I just wanna bring that up and, and see if we can get that corrected.
You mentioned this to me and I've already flagged it, I haven't done any research on it, was the description there, should it be zero now?
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, make sure you check with Ed, cause we were talking about changing a lot of these numbers. And that's just one more we would propose. And I see Jim's point, I don't have a problem, you know, going to zero side setback. Um, but there, there was a number of these numbers we just, we had like a preliminary table and Ed's got it. I've got one of my notes I could dig up, but I think when the last time I saw Ed's, the version I shared had those numbers. And it was really just making a lot of them more consistent.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if we have a twenty-foot side setback, why do we have a twenty, twenty or forty foot of the road? That doesn't necessarily make sense, so there was some, just, and and really just trying to streamline, I think, some of it so that it weren't. So many differences everywhere. And the village is a unique space, so um. Yeah, I know, I know, I'm almost positive that Jim brought that up. Six, nine months ago, when, when we talked about this table. That it was on the discussion before, so that's why I'd be surprised if it wasn't in Ed's document already.
And like I said, he has time to, next week, he said, so if I get him the hard copy, so we can pull up these things forward, and I'm gonna highlight another thing. That I'm concerned about, and that is the density in the village, missed opportunities, because I've already had people inquiring about. Having multiple units and buildings, that there's not enough land area. Um, we looked at the one at, is it forty-eight, one forty-eight Main Street, um. The gentleman came in and he also couldn't do the project, he just came in initially wanting to do twelve units. And he ended up getting six, I think, or seven, you all reviewed it.
Yeah.
Um, but he managed to make the numbers work. But that might have been something he had to walk away from, and it's in, would be in keeping with everything that's been identified in all of your land use plans. The long-term plans is higher density in the village, and that's gonna be a difficult discussion. And I think it's important to have that sooner rather than later, because of this missed opportunity.
Right, but you already mentioned that, the consolidated building. That that's not really an option, and I look, you know, downtown and see the mill and then the middle back building and even the second back building on the other side. And those buildings would need massive revamp, but. The space is already there, so, you know, they would not be allowed to. Put in a number of units, and that's just because of the way our ordinance is written, so I think that's a good one to bring up again.
Jim, had you finished? Jim? Aaron?
Oh, he's raising his hand, I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, this is Jim, I'm sorry, my phone was acting up, yeah, I, I'm done with um, my um.
Under what you said?
For now.
Thank you. Aaron?
You're welcome.
My question is if. And maybe can't just, but I think your, the ordinance you're. Proposing would be for new, new development.
Expansions or new, and the threshold you all that would decide that, so you may say, so it's commercial, multi-family, you may say. Oh, anything above five hundred square feet, if they make an expansion or change, we wanna see that, or you may say five thousand square feet, so it can be. As restrictive in terms of, you know, coming to the planning board or loose as you feel comfortable with, but um. It would apply to commercial and, and multi-family, it's a site plan ordinance is what it is that, that I'm talking about.
True.
Did that answer the question?
Well, I guess, you know, if somebody owns a property. And they want to make an improvement to it. Where would that tie into an ordinance like this, are they gonna have to all of a sudden? You know, if they wanna do, if they don't have the budget to comply to the ordinance the way it's, you know. That. We're talking about.
You guys.
Are they gonna have to? Or is it only gonna apply to new construction or an expansion?
You're gonna decide that, you're gonna decide and put it to the public. And usually what happens is, any development that moves forward after the ordinance is adopted, the ordinance applies. But if there are special considerations in the town and you wanna give dispensation to certain types of uses, then you have the ability to do that. It's, it's your town, it's your ordinance, you don't wanna get boxed in. But you wanna make sure that things are, you know, clear and that you also don't get yourself in legal trouble. There's a fine line between clever and stupid, I always say.
Yeah. Or prohibited. Yeah, that would be it.
Oh shit, I don't know what. Don, you have enough inputs?
Well, um, I feel like everyone's nodding, people think this is important. And I am literally burning people out, but I feel like there's. Ten top. Important things right now, so there's the cycling regs, the zoning work, reorganization, which you mean can incorporate a lot of these other pieces into that. The table with uses and definitions that can be incorporated, bringing other land use ordinances in. I guess, where would you like to prioritize the site plan regulations in, in? There's zoning ordinance changes and there's the site plan, creation of the site plan changes, what is your thought on? Cause I won't be able to tackle both well at the same time. What is your feeling on what you'd like to see come forward first?
I'd love to see just maybe a couple of example site plans, but maybe the ordinance has come first. That would be my thought, but just maybe pulling a couple of examples, and I'm gonna look, I think Saco's got a good one.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm gonna, I'll, I can try to dig around too if I have time and. I just think it'd be nice to see. See what's out there.
So I'll collect some background information.
Yeah, and not, not, not asking you to put a draft together, anything like that, it's just. Really just, you know, maybe just even a couple of web links and say, hey, these are a couple I found, you click on these, you go look at these. What do you think of these, just, I think so, we're more informed of what you're thinking and we're more informed about what other towns are doing. Um, and I think, you know, Aaron brought up a couple of good ones like Freeport and Belgrade, I think those would be good. You know, sometimes if you can find those and be like, here's the link, go to page, whatever. And that could really help us narrow it down, cause some towns have great webpages, some towns are not.
Hmm.
I know that from the solar ordinance, it was a nightmare, search it through webpages.
Hmm.
And even when I tried to do the cluster development and I started doing the, the cluster development research, that was a nightmare. Um, that it was just very hard to wade through, some of the towns just did not make it easy at all, ours is not really that easy either, but.
Aaron, what do you have?
I, I second Rex's comments.
Really?
Um, it's hard to figure which you should do first, what needs to be done so badly, um. If we don't move forward. With the plan for the town, we could be on the back burner. When somebody else takes our ideas and some, and people move there instead of here. We've got the room for expanding downtown. We've got all these lakes, so why is it that some lakes and other places have great downtowns and we don't have one? And what do they have that we don't have, because. With all these lakes, some, I mean, there should be a lot of activity. If you think of some of these other places that have one lake.
Yeah.
One big lake, but. Yeah, we've gotta figure out a way to use our resources to our benefit.
Look at how, they all they got to river.
Yeah.
In all those businesses.
Yeah, they do get. Seems like what you wanna do with the site plan is gonna be incorporated into the order.
All sudden, yeah.
In the end.
So if we're gonna redo the ordinance, uh, I suggest that we go ahead and work on what we already got. And then incorporate this in if we do it, yeah. Right, so we don't have to put an ordinance out there two or three times to get approved, but.
Yeah, I think I'm a little bit opposite from the general consensus, I think if. If we're talking about consort consolidation of the ordinances into the zoning ordinances, that stuff is already existing. People come into town, they've got to abide by that anyway. It would be a nice administrative housekeeping thing to get it cleaned up and have one document to look at. I think I'd probably rather put time and effort, and I'd like to know what that level of effort would be, is that a, is that a forty-hour level of effort to get everything consolidated, two meetings with us and we can knock it out? Or is it gonna be, you know, six months protracted and a lot of discussion on it, I think I'd rather put time and effort into. Site plan review. And, and take that on first, that's, that would be my preference. But again, I'd like to have a little bit more background maybe on what we're looking at and, and kind of level, general level of effort for, and what we think we can realistically accomplish.
Do we have a feel for how long it's gonna. Uh, update this zoning ordinance with the stuff we're already doing, the setbacks and all that, doesn't seem like that's gonna be.
No more four weeks already.
Well, we've said, as long as when Ed and I get together, if it's, if it represents what it is that he feels you guys did, and it depends on. If, when you go to the public, it's contentious or if everyone's.
Yeah.
Not in their head. Could be very simple, if, you know, it makes sense, you put it out there, or it could be where people kept their hair catches on fire, you're gonna reduce the setback? So we can't account for that piece, right?
No, but we can put the document together with the changes. And get that done fairly quick, I think.
So they were close on.
Yeah, and then tackle, tackle the site plan right away, so that when we do it, we get them all.
So if I were to, you have your materials of what's on the agenda and I were to supply you with the site plan stuff. With that, it's not gonna burn everyone out and saying, oh, you know, like if I provide you with information that you're not gonna make a decision on yet. And then the things that you're gonna make a decision on, it's not, is it gonna feel like it's too much?
For those two, I think you're talking about.
Yeah, for the site plan and then the zoning changes.
Uh, you know, it really depends on a lot of things, for me, the ordinance, I felt like we spent a lot of time, we spent several meetings. Talking about it, and I thought we had really good information, I thought we were really close.
Mm-hmm.
That's why I'm kinda putting that one first, the site plan, it could be that we find a good example right off the bat, we're like, hey, let's put that one right in. So it really could be, they get merged.
In other words.
And, but like you said, I mean, we don't know until we start the public comment. You know, people, we talked about changing like the lot size and the side setback, you could have a hundred people in here, like, you can't change the side setback. That might really bother people, you don't know, we, we think it's like a small change, and they're like, no, I live in this zone, you can't do that, I need this space. And so we don't know if it's gonna be contentious or not. When, until you kinda get there, so it could be that there's time to kinda merge them. And especially if we're working on the site plan and that part of the ordinance becomes contentious, the ordinance slows down. And the site plan's about plenty of time to catch up and stick in, so that's why I wasn't, I'm not trying to. I just, I just feel like I, I don't have a good context of a good example of site planted and starting from scratch. And if we're on completely different pages, that could be a long process. So I felt like just before we even, like, maybe let's not. So I felt like just before we even, like, maybe let's not spend the time and pick right now.
Mm-hmm.
Let's just say, okay, let's look at both. You'll have a draft ordinance, find some examples of site plans, and then we can kind of inform the valuation of what maybe makes a good plan.
I feel like I have directive. I feel like I have what I need, what I was looking for tonight.
Good.
It's gonna be what you're looking for, but I'll have stuff for you for the next meeting regarding both.
Okay.
It sounded like, uh, consensus is that we really are excited about. Cleaning up what we've been working on. And then go to work on the site plan and introducing that as, as appropriate. Whether it's easy or it's a long process.
And, and until we go to public to comment, we may not know. Correct.
I was at a, um, a town council meeting one night. It was in Yarmouth in a. That it was packed and we, the room was packed and the, um. There was, we had put together a language maximum square footage of retail, right? So this was gonna decide, can you put a Walgreens in or, you know, some type of a, um. Franchise development. And I thought, wow, I didn't realize how contentious this is gonna be. I mean, I was standing in the room normally. I was, I started to sweat a little bit. I prepared. So before that item on the agenda, there was a discussion about whether or not dogs could be allowed in the park. When that item was over, the room disappeared. There wasn't a single person was there. So you just, I thought you just never know.
Well, I've talked to folks that live out there. And they, some folks had no problem with the gravel pit, but they hated the solar power. And some had just the opposite interest. And so. Who knows? You never know. You're right. So it sounds like you have good direction.
I feel like I do.
We're gonna shoot for. The next meeting to try to do something with this and have some examples or. Uh. We're calling it.
Site plan.
Site plan. Agreed?
Well, thank you all for having this discussion. I appreciate it.
Tonight, great. We'll set it now. You're, you're gonna update it.
I, I feel like I.
Yeah.
Can you do what?
The part Jim brought up about downtown, we're gonna incorporate that.
Yeah. That should be on the table.
It will. That makes sense. Reorganization. Ed's comments regarding the local space table, yeah.
I was trying to remember. I don't, the side setbacks and the rear set. I don't think we changed those, did we? It was mainly the road.
Um.
Boy, no, I thought we changed. I'll go after to look at the version. I know we tried to match some of them up.
There was a lot of changes in there.
The side and the back.
Based on what Ed had given me. And I'll show you, this is what.
I didn't think, uh.
Okay, Don, is that complete the agenda?
It does.
Yeah, you're right. It was a lot of road setbacks.
Apologize. Oh, I just wanted to ask, is there anyone who doesn't have a binder? And I, I printed these planning board manuals for everyone and I have two, which means two people didn't get them. And I don't know if, um, Jim was one of them, but. I brought them with me. Is anyone here still need a planning board manual, the one that, and then it was out. Oh, I have one.
I got that one.
I got that. Oh.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, I've got that.
I'll look back at home. I'm not sure.
What is it you want us to put in this? And a big, a big book.
Well, I've been trying to figure out, but like, I always feel like I have my stuff organized. I get them on flip, flip, flipping.
That's what I'm doing.
Normally I let it put in the binder and then it's in order three whole papers. And then you can, you know, just bring the one binder to the meeting. You don't have to use it.
But for that meeting, but you're not.
You don't have.
We don't want to keep them in that binder forever.
No.
No. So we'd have like the zoning ordinance in there and the planning board and stuff, uh.
And then application materials if you want, and then you could get rid of those after the meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that would be great. Well, I just keep, I mean, in my binder, I don't keep the current. I keep the zoning ordinance. I keep the subdivision ordinance and I keep the shoreline zone ordinance, the state one.
Yeah.
Just so we've got them as, I just use them as reference.
Yeah.
I don't. I just, yeah, I wouldn't put stuff in and take it out. This is just like, I bring the binder just, this is my paper version of the ordinance, so I'm not. Looking on my phone, trying to read it.
And if we have workshop stuff that you're gonna be looking at more than one meeting, yeah.
Put it in there, yeah.
And you don't have to. I just.
Well, I, I just put the current stuff in the small one. So then I don't.
Yeah.
And then I'm gonna have the big one that.
Did you, did I give you one? Do you have a?
I've got one.
Okay. Aaron, did you have a binder?
I think I got two.
I knew you. You're running around the big ones.
Okay, Jim, you had a point?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. Um. It's a kind of off the current topic in a way. Um. Whenever we put a document together with all of this in it. We have to make sure that it is accessible. I spent hours and hours, weeks. People have no idea how much time I spent making our. Ordinance document accessible. It didn't go anywhere. I presented it to the planning board. Mark was gonna put it up on, uh, line. It never got up. And. Um. It was like all that time and effort and energy that I spent making an accessible document. Was for naught. And, um, we just have to start getting with the program. This is twenty twenty-four, not nineteen twenty-four. And it's high time that we start. Paying attention to the kind of things that are important to everybody. So I'm not gonna say anymore because you don't want to hear the rest of what I have to say. I'm just saying, we gotta do it. There's no question about it. And I will work with whomever is putting it together. Um, to help that person, um, understand. Accessibility, uh, guidelines and, um, and, and how it works. And, um, so. I know that Anthony has done since Stefan. A few different things that. But anyway, we need to, as a planning board, make sure that what we do. Represents who we really are. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jim. Brett? And Don?
Thank you. Also, hey.
Also.
AV equipment? Pete?
I.
Guestman?
I, I don't have a current date.
Okay.
I was wondering, but I just want to also comment in regards to what Jim's comment is that, um, the council on Monday night. The planning, planning board, uh. Is, not the agenda, but the budget is on their radar. So I have to go to that meeting. One of the things that I put in the budget, and I've mentioned this, is. Uh, codification of the ordinances. It's really not something fun and related. It's town-wide, but I put it in my budget because it. I just picked up the ball. And that company that I checked with, and I, I think probably they all do, is they may get compliant with, um. What's being discussed. So if the council, uh, allocates some funds for that, that company would be taking care of that for us. And, and Anthony is on board. He thought that was important as well. So you want to send an email to the council for Monday?
And the five-year compliance, that's a federal.
Yeah.
Requirement anyways.
Yeah.
It's not really optional.
No. It's optional until you get sued.
Any elsewhere?
No, that was it.
I'll entertain a motion. I'm sorry.
Nope, that's it. I'm sorry.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Post adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yep.
His hand is raised. Maybe that means.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Coming along with her.
And don't hesitate to tell me if I'm bringing you the.
If you don't show, if you start not showing up.
Well, and I can, I can step back. I just, um. I'm concerned about burning you out and I'm concerned about not doing it. So.
So, yeah, I will not be here two weeks. I might be online if I'm lucky, but I'll be in Connecticut, so.
Thrilling.
I'm flying to DC next week. I gotta present to the Italian Council.
Where the hell was that?
Downtown DC, yeah. But everybody else is constipated, yeah.
Wow, it's gonna be way down.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Well, we've gone, I've kind of been in the.
Eight-minute presentation on a climate change project that we're doing on future hydrology. I gotta go present to the Italian Council. I'm like.
It's gonna take you long to get there and get home.
I'm like, what?
Oh, my God. What a riot.
We're talking about a waste of money. I'm like, seriously?